Aloha and good afternoon. I'm Dylan Anjetta here in the Hawaii News Now Digital Center. Happening right now, the Maui County Council is holding a special press conference regarding the latest in their wildfire response. Let's go ahead and take you live now to Maui.
Priorities, definitely long-term housing. People are having some difficulty being constantly moved either from room to room or property to property or side of the island to another side of the island. It's difficult when folks are saying, you know, you need to apply for jobs when you don't have like a long-term housing place. Some of the difficulties in staying in the hotels, especially the ones without kitchens, is, you know, some people have specific dietary needs, whether they have...
And we do apologize. We are getting this feed from our friends at Akaku Media. We are working to make sure that they're...
Another priority is childcare. It's difficult to go to work. There was some distress about sending children back to school about a quarter mile above the burn zone and, you know, concern for when Phase 2 starts. It sounded as though they would be monitoring how the debris removal goes in Kula to get a sense of what to prepare for in Lahaina. There were some suggestions made about, you know, the short-term rentals being used as long-term rentals. There was suggestions made about specifically Wahikuli being rebuilt. A lot of those houses are surrounded by other houses on sewer, but they're specifically on cesspool. And so there's concern if they have to put in septic, if there's space for a lead field and the added expense and time that it would take to do that before they're allowed to rebuild. So a request to temporarily be able to reconnect to their cesspools and for the county to come in with sewer, as we've been talking about it for at least the past 20 years. And it makes sense. I mean, they're surrounded by sewer hookups.
The other thing is evacuation routes, prevention and closing of certain hubs.
Yeah, those were also concerns. They brought up the evacuation route from the school goes right into where the fires usually start. And it's very dry right now.
Evacuation route?
Fire prevention. And some people mentioned that Kelaua Mauna Kamakai, Honokua Park and S-Turns were slated to transition out. And it's those places are kind of places where people feel comfortable going to and, you know, have built up relationships and they get to see community. So maybe they weren't ready for that transition yet, but we do understand that the community also would like their park spaces to enjoy as well. So it's difficult.
Ready for our first question? Yes, A'la'i. Is it?
Recording has started.
Obviously, a lot of residents expressing frustration when they don't see their concerns met. Could you maybe respond to that? That's something that was brought up during last night's meeting.
Yeah, yeah, they, um, they thought, I mean, they did present a very loud and direct message that they weren't ready for tourism to open. And, um, you know, we on the council did what we could to support that. We passed the resolution, which also get passed on to the state. And, um, that's kind of the scope of our authority. We did what was in our authority to support what we heard. But, you know, that is a good point. We don't have a magic wand. And, you know, one of the other frustrations was that people wanted to rebuild right away, you know, as soon as their lot gets cleared of debris. They'd like to go back and just sometimes rebuild exactly what they had. But from the talks I had with the Office of Recovery, you know, there's damage assessment and infrastructure like water and sewer in some places. And what I was told is, you know, there's all these things that needs to be made safer. And if we rebuild it, everything back exactly as it was, then it will be exactly as it is. And, you know, a lot of the streets were very narrow. And so we need to have discussions with the community as a whole, with the departments and see what that vision of building back safer than what it was ultimately looks like. And, you know, obviously not everybody's going to agree, especially if it's, if you want to make it a two-way street when it's in the historic district. And so you need an easement off somebody's property or something, or if their property was right at the edge of the ocean and the infrastructure is no longer there, is it that we're going to rebuild that infrastructure with the knowledge of what the sea level rise predictions are? And so, I mean, I don't have those answers, but it's definitely discussions that need to take place and find the way forward to, to make sure everybody's concerns are addressed and that it's safe and we get the most for what we build back. You know, if we're going to put in like a brand new water line right next to the ocean and the lifespan of it is till the next big storm event, is that the best use of the limited funds we have?
And then Star Advertiser?
Sure, thanks. This question could be for you or Chair Lee. What are your views on the pace of the zones reopening? The pace so far?
Well, you know, the first, from the first zone to the second zone was, was very slow and it gave Maui Emergency Management Agency a chance to work out the kinks of what needs to be done better. And it seems to be speeding up, which is good. I know a lot of people are ramping up. I think more so than the pace, what I've repeatedly heard is they want to have an order so that they, they may not know the timeframe when their particular zone will open up, but if they see where they are in line, then they can make that arrangement. You know, some folks have relocated to the mainland, some folks are elderly and they're having their children that live far away come and assist them. And without knowing when they are in the thing, in the lineup, it's difficult to make those kinds of arrangements. Initially, they were kind of looked like they were going from north to south, and then they started a little bit from the south. And so just, that's the main concern I'm hearing from folks is being able to know the order so that they know if this zone opens up, I'm next, start looking at flights or whatever the case may be. I'm off of work, whatever.
Also, it's about 50% completed as of today. So it is moving at a more rapid pace. And, but again, we have to be extremely careful. Okay. We have to be extremely careful because we're talking about public health and safety. And we want to make sure that the properties are as in good condition as possible when people return. Any more questions from you, from Star? Civil B?
Thanks for making the time. It's really appreciated. One question I had, well, it comes from something I just learned about yesterday up on Kula when I joined the House Finance Committee for its field trip. And we heard from the CRS, Natural Conservation Resource Service, which is under the USDA, about their plan to control all this loose soil that no longer has vegetative cover. And the plan that they're proposing or about to officially propose, but that's on track, is to drop a lot of seeds of the same invasive grasses that were the fuel, the buffalo giving them, identified the specific ones, but that's very much like moving forward. And I was very surprised to learn it and some others I called who are experts in alien pest species were as well. So I was just curious, like, have they been consulted with any council leadership or council members? And what are your thoughts on, on this, this plan that's in the works?
Yeah, no, I hadn't heard about that. You know, I've been so immersed in Lahaina, I haven't visited the burn sites up country. And it's just, you know, secondhand information of what is going on up there. For Lahaina, there are bio remediation groups going on. And I know that they're, they're discussing it, but this is the first that I heard that the soil stabilization involves replanting the invasive grasses that, you know, contribute to, to those fires. I don't know that that's been vetted by the community up there or Lahaina, but I would hope we can do it differently. Maybe it's the opening point for a discussion amongst those in the conservation field and the community that lives there.
That's all I can share for timeline is what they shared, which is they're working on damage assessment reports for the next couple of weeks. I guess they have crews in the field, then they plan to make their, those are their game plan of sorts, and they'll run that up USDA for funding and approval. And then they were talking about dropping the seeds within a couple hundred days.
Are they working with State DofA and Dillinard?
That came up, but not, it was unclear if they're actually working closely with them or not.
That's, that's very disturbing information. So you can bet that we'll be checking on, checking up, following up on, on your comments today. We weren't aware of it.
A quick related follow-up. Just one of the reasons was...
I think there's a button on the microphone.
Yeah, it's on. One of the reasons they provided for doing the invasives was just that there's not enough native seeds available. And so some folks weren't quite convinced of that, different experts I talked to, but I didn't, I just wanted to share those as well in case you have any comment.
Yeah, I know Puukuku'i Watershed in West Maui does do seed collection. So I don't know if they're in touch with all of the folks out there. But like Chair Lee said, we, we can try follow-up and if they need to be connected and if there are that resource available, I mean, especially at the elevation that Kula is, it would be nice to see natives put back in.
It's Paul Aker, Maui Alert. Thank you for having us, Councilmember Paulton. Two quick, easy questions for you. First relates to Hurricane Lane. And we have reported that you were in attendance at that county meeting, the town hall meeting, following shortly thereafter, where people vociferously voiced complaints about such things as dry hydrants, no alert systems, no sirens, many of the same things that we saw become very problematic in the August 8th fire. So the question is, based on the fact that you then became a council member and have headed the drip, which is in part responsible for disaster and chair that committee, do you have any regrets not being more proactive following that meeting where all those concerns were laid out and yet they were repeated, some of the concerns?
Yeah, you know, I definitely have a huge regret that Lahaina burnt down and that, you know, so many people lost their lives. I did try to follow up. I've been the chair of drip since the beginning of this year. The previous two terms, I was the chair of the Planning and Land Use Commission or Committee. And we did try to put in safeguards in the community plan for West Maui as that moved through the process. At the meeting, I was mostly trying to coordinate with the Department of Environmental Management on the removal of the vehicles and the debris. At that point, you know, they had no pre-arranged disaster contracts. And so everything to get done was taking much, much longer than it did this time. And I'm not sure if it's because of who was in charge at that time in terms of the director of environmental management. This time, you know, within three, four days, rubbish pickup in West Maui started up. There were dumpsters being placed around and things like that. In the fires, after the fires in 2018 and 2021, I have spoken with, like, at that time, it was Mahina Martin about, you know, concerns about turning off the electricity when there's high winds like that. It was never, they never determined it was due to electricity lines that the fire had started, but many people believe that's how it started. And in my conversations with the electric company at that time, the excuses that they had given were that, well, if they turn off the electricity, people could get into car accidents because the traffic lights aren't working or people with medical equipment wouldn't have the power to have their oxygen or whatever they need. And at that time, I said, well, I think the power didn't come back on to West Maui for a few weeks. So preventatively turning it off would have been the call to make. And they said, well, we just can't take that kind of risk. And then I asked like, well, what about burying the power lines? And they said, well, you know, it's a historic district. It's very expensive. There's concerns about Iwiku Puna. And they kind of just ended the conversation there. I did have discussions with Herman and Daya at that time about the placement of supplies in rural areas, about the idea of tents and hubs at our county parks. So when it happened in 2023 and there was no communication, my neighbors and I, I just said, ah, he knows because we had this discussion, you know, we're going to set up tents in the parks and we're going to be there to support the people. In terms of brush abatement, I did have many conversations with the Puukuku'i Watershed Crew, Pomaikua'i, Kanyopio Crozier. And he said, you know, this annual fires that we're getting, it didn't used to happen so much when, I guess at that time, Miko used to do brush abatement under their lines. And so when I followed up with Miko, they said, well, you know, that's very expensive. We're looking into doing other things.
Once again, we do apologize for any technical difficulties. We are getting this live feed from our partners at Akaku Media. So give it a few moments if it is buffering along the way. Let's go ahead and listen back in.
When we had a fire, you know, there were times when I worked the beaches where there was a fire on the pali and the fire department asked us to stay later because we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do ocean rescue. And there was no communication. So, you know, I'm thinking like, are people going to be able to call 911 without any telephone lines? And, you know, Mr. Andaya's responses was like, oh, we're working on it or we, we're going to use radio. And then in our vulnerability update, it was brought up that unlike in previous years, the radio stations are not always manned, especially in the evening hours. Although I don't think that was the case because this fire had started in the afternoon time. And so Chair Lee did ask interim administrator Darrel Olivera about what has changed. And he went over some of the things that they're putting in place with the radio stations. As to the sirens, I can't speak to what they were thinking or doing, but I don't think it was the right call.
So were you able to follow up on any of those conversations to see if any action happened after you brought some of those things up?
Well, so in 2021, on election evening, there was another fire in West Maui. And at that time, it was about the diversion of the stream flow and the interim in-stream flow standards. The other, one of the other questions I had asked the fire chief when the new fire chief was being selected is controlled burns. And, you know, there wasn't, it seemed as though they need the right conditions to do controlled burns, even if it's being used as training and the right amount of staff. Had a lot of conversations, you know, about like, if we need to divert water from the Kuliana users who rely on that water to fight the fires from their homes to a reservoir for the helicopter to dip the bucket in, why aren't we not just dipping the bucket in the ocean? And his response was that they'll always want to dip the bucket in the closest location to the fire. And if the reservoirs didn't exist and they had to, no other choice but to dip the bucket in the ocean, per FAA guidelines, they would have to shut the road. And then that would take additional manpower and, you know, be an inconvenience to the public. Ultimately, the multiple conversations that I had with folks, I am not the authority over them. It's the Fire and Public Safety Commission, and they have the authority to give reviews and whatnot.
Thank you. And then the second question, the, the second half of this fast, easy equation about the short-term rentals. You've been no fan of short-term rentals in the past. You, at one point, I think, suggested or if not proposed legislation to convert those to long-term rentals. There is talk, active talk, I believe, between the mayor's office and the governor's office about essentially converting STRs to long-term rentals in favor of fire victims. Would you support that plan? And if so, could you tell us under what conditions?
Yeah, I would support that plan. You know, we were in desperate need of long-term housing and the stability it brings for our Under what conditions? I mean, I'd, I'd like to have a broader discussion with all the entities involved. I am aware that short-term rentals, the TAT that they bring with them and the GET are a significant contribution to our county budget. But at the same time, what we would use the county budget for is to probably build that housing. And some of the problems are, is the resources of water and road infrastructure and those things. And so with the conversion of short-term rental, those infrastructure is somewhat there for that housing ability. I think, you know, the apartment districts make the most sense because those weren't forever short-term rentals. We seen a big conversion of that in, I think it was 2012 or so. I think some of the conditions that need to be addressed would be tax incentives. Also that the rent would be commensurate with the HUD guidelines of rentals, not like, you know, $10,000 for a one-bedroom or something like that. If there, I, my understanding is if it's through a direct leasing from FEMA, then FEMA takes on the responsibility, you know, if the person's short-term rental is damaged or not vacated or whatever, then it's on FEMA. So I think that would be the preferable way to go about it is a direct lease of short-term rentals to, through FEMA.
Thank you for the response. I guess I would just ask, if you went with the HUD rates, those probably wouldn't be enough to sustain a lot of people that have mortgages on their short-term rentals. Is there any way to get around that? Any solution maybe in mind to help those, you know, potential short-term rental owners that would be now facing a hardship?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, we, not me specifically, but if it's through the emergency proclamation, it could be set at whatever percentage of the HUD fair market rate it is. If, you know, some of the entities that were collecting money would supplement what FEMA is able to provide, like offset it. Because when Bob Fenn... HUD fair market value for what they had before, if it was a one-bedroom, what HUD fair market value is for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. And that there are nonprofits that can assist with like first and last months or the deposit or whatever. If it's going to be a percentage over HUD, maybe we can talk with, you know, Hawaii Community Foundation or Fund, that entity that brought in over 100 million about, you know, breaking down how many families are still in non-congregate shelter and need long-term housing and what could be used and how much to ensure that enough people have this long-term housing so that they're not feeling so pressured while we're doing debris removal and the rebuild and, and things like that. And there's definitely different types of folks, you know, the folks that were renters to begin with, if they still have their job, maybe might be able to supplement some if they were renters and they don't have the, a job. And having the long-term housing would allow them to get a job, you know, or people that own their home and now are faced with trying to still pay their mortgage and find a new place to live and all the expenses involved in raising their families and just day-to-day living.
Thank you. Adam Lightplay with Maui Community Media, Akaku. This question is for either of you. There's been a lot of discussion, both from the public and even from experts regarding the schools opening up so close to the toxic burn zone. And I know the Department of Education is a state department, but I'm wondering, for you as council members, do you have any veto power or is there anything other than a strongly worded resolution to the state? Is there a way that you can at some point say, no, this is too dangerous to our citizens? We're going to... We're going to overrule you or demand something different? So I'm wondering where the county can get involved in that if you feel that something that important is going on.
My personal veto power is I'm not sending my own children back. I I have um strong concerns. When I went to the high school football game, we stood in the wind and it was blowing cones by halftime of the varsity game. My husband had a hard time to breathe. Both of us had headaches and I had tingle here on my eyes, nose and mouth, so we just left. When I spoke to the Department of Health about that, he said, you know, I'm not discounting your symptoms. I totally believe that you did have it, but the data and the science shows that we believe it's safe. But he understood that, you know, it's a choice that parents need to make for their own children and as do I. The issue to me is that we're not being given options if we make that choice. My children are in immersion. The only other option is to take them either to Hana or Kalama. And that's not realistic for me. Some of my children's classmates' parents got calls today that if they don't show up, they will be disenrolled from Kula Kailapuni. The Kula Kailapuni teachers in the middle school are not feeling safe going to work either. One of the kumu went to her classroom and had headaches after two hours. And so, you know, I don't I don't think it's right for the state not to have options, especially with the unknown of phase two. If if parents and students and teachers want to return to school, then the DOE should support that. If they don't want to return to that location, that should also be supported. And um for us, Kula Kailapuni Ola Haina, we were in the process of securing another site, getting funders, building a new school. And the DOE said, no, we had been working with them a lot all along on environmental assessment, soil samples. And when October seventeenth came, the answer came as a no. So at this time, um we're not satisfied. And and Hawaii is a two language state and we're not um we're not disenrolling our children from Hawaiian immersion. We'd like some options.
I defer to Member Paulton on this subject. I support her on that. Any other questions? Yes, Star Advertiser.
All right, thanks. Andrew Gomes again, Star Advertiser for Member Paulton and perhaps Chair King as well. Regarding the
Chair Lee.
Chair Lee, my bad, apologize. Regarding the Oloualu, you know, potential landfill, can you clarify like your understanding between temporary or permanent? And then do you support the idea? And then does the council have any approval authority for having that happen or not?
If if you don't mind, um about about the options and the choices and the pros and cons. My understanding is we have two main options. The first option would be the Central Maui landfill. And the second option would be the Oloualu quarry, the Cinder Quarry. And my understanding is that Kula um debris, ash debris will be taken to the Central Maui landfill. It's closer. And there's no, there were no fatalities in Kula. The process, as it was explained to me, is that the trucks that they'll be using, and I think there's about fifty one trucks, and there'll be thousands of truckloads um for West Maui at least. But the trucks will be lined with a visqueen plastic liner and the ash debris. Although there is soil tack, um there may be some dust. And they would use um water to try and keep the dust down. There would be a lot of air monitor sensors to see, you know, the particulate in the air. And um once the truck liner is filled, it would be um, I've heard wrapped like a burrito or since this is Hawaii, like a laulau. And then heat sealed and transported to the Central Maui landfill for Kula. Whether it is the Central Maui landfill or the Oloualu site, it would have a temporary storage at either site. So um the downside for the Central Maui landfill is the temporary storage is not quite as close to the permanent site. The other downside to utilizing the Central Maui landfill is that um it's goes in with all of the rest of our trash, which can have organic matter that breaks down into liquid. And that liquid is what forms the leachate, which is what is um dangerous and and needs to be monitored for at least thirty years. So the the pros and cons of using the Oloualu site. There already is um ground and air quality monitors because it already was a landfill and it's been monitored for almost the whole thirty years. So they do have a baseline readings of what is there. Of course, they would add more, is what I've been told, of groundwater and air quality monitors. The difference is five miles versus twenty five miles of transport. Also, in Lahaina, um we're expecting three hundred, a hundred. Even if people's um bones were recovered, um a lot of folks feel like, you know, there there is still remains in the ashes of, you know, the people that have not yet been um found, that there's missing persons report on. And also, you know, part of the issue of not wanting to move Ivi Kupuna is it's not only the bones, it's everything of of the person. And so, you know, some folks call the um Lahaina ash debris, Lahaina remains. And it's not only there could be the remains of people, but remains of our whole entire town. And um so if that landfill is stood up, the temporary site and the final site is right next to each other instead of like the Central Maui landfill where it's a little bit further. One of the the biggest pros, in my opinion, is that um it's not it's not gonna be mixed in with household trash. And so um the ash, the soil, non-recyclable metal or concrete has not a big chance of becoming liquid in that site. And so these heat sealed plastic um burritos or laulaus would be stacked in there. And and there's not a good chance of much leachate, if any, to um escape. Some of the differences, and I think the reason the DOE is hesitant is um their standard specs is a two foot clay liner and a sixty millimeter plastic liner. In this case, because of the topography of the um Oloualu Cinder Quarry. What is being proposed by the consultant, um which is A M E H R, not sure what that stands for, but third party consultant to um designing the potential landfill and temporary site. They're proposing a six inch clay layer with an eighty millimeter plastic liner, which um from what I'm told is above and beyond the standard specs for a landfill of that type. And then there would be like a concrete um cover that would um make water um not go in but whisk it away if there were heavy rains. Although that site is not super prone to heavy rains with climate change, you don't know. I did ask um the susceptibility to earthquakes and if so, what magnitude it would be. They would monitor similar for thirty years. I mean, it would be nice to monitor it a little bit longer or maybe in perpetuity. There was brief discussion about um that being a memorial site. And they would make you a comfort station and parking and things like that if it's so desired by folks. You know, not not really a lot of great options. In terms of debris removal, a lot of people would like it um shipped away, although some want to be close to, you know, their loved ones' remains. I'm told that taking it off island would multiply the cost by ten. And we would still need to look for a state that would accept it and how much that would cost. In addition, um the estimated cost of building this landfill, which I my understanding is the county would have to pay for is um thirty six million or thirty five million or something like that. Is that answer your question?
And then I just want to reiterate that I think most of us support the idea of the remains of the debris going to Oloualu. We, as a council, sent a letter to the state. I believe they they're having a meeting tomorrow in support of the Oloualu site because it's so much closer than the Central Maui landfill, which is over twenty five miles away. And the idea that people would be closer to their remains and the fact that if it becomes a memorial and people have the opportunity to spend time there, either at a grieving station or a comfort station. This is important to the people of Lahaina. And we're hoping, we're hoping that the decision will be made in favor of what we're asking because this will otherwise, it'll just delay the whole process as well. Because for people to rebuild, the debris has to be removed. Any more questions? Anybody on this side? Civil B?
Thanks again for the time. I really appreciate it. With housing is one of the issues that is very top of mind, top priority that you decided. One of the biggest projects with the biggest your thoughts are on.
Well, we passed a near unanimous resolution. Ultimately, it's in the mayor's um hands at this point. I would just say, you know, if a decision could be made sooner rather than later cuz then, you know, if if it's a no, then we pivot to another solution. And if it's a yes, then let's get going. So I imagine we we voiced our support, but you know, it's just a project like other projects. And if it's a no, then we need to figure out what we are going to do.
Most of us support Pulelehua. However, it's not clear where the administration stands with that project, even though he knows that the council supports it. And there really aren't many alternatives. There's, that project has been approved in the past for eighteen hundred, I mean, eight hundred units. So it already has its major approvals. Right now, the developer is looking to make adjustments to the project to possibly add more units because of the the fires and the displaced residents needing more rental units. So, you know, we're we're hoping they would move on it because other than that project, there might be another one or two. But this one is the most far along than any other project of that size on the west side. So, yeah, we are supportive of that project and we hope that it can be moved forward because um we heard last night that people are very anxious and they they're dealing with a lot of uncertainties and housing is one of them.
And and part of the proposal that um the resolution had was it would go from fifty percent affordable to um one hundred percent affordable. And I think there's one hundred for sale multifamily and the rest would be all rentals. And um from some of the meetings that I've had with developers, some of the for sale projects that we have approved in the past are talking about converting to rentals because of the high interest rates and the expectation that interest rates will rise further, making it more difficult to pencil out and um for buyers as well because of those high interest rates. So, you know, um much of that project was rentals anyway. And it seems like, you know, in the market that we're in and the forecasts with interest rates, that that looks like the direction that a lot of developers are are pivoting to right now anyway.
Any more questions? K I T V?
Sorry for Member Paulton. So what have your kids been doing then? Is there a virtual option? I know earlier the DOE mentioned that there would be, but is that the case?
Right now, uh the kumu that aren't returning to school are still teaching on their sick leave. I think Tuesday, they spent the day at the Commission on Water Resource Management. In the month leading up to fall break, they were doing Huakai. You know, they'd go to Honolulu, up at Puukukui, learn about that. Go to Honolulu at Honolulu Bay, learn about the Makai side. And um, you know, with men having lost their houses as well, just um just being together um was more important than the location of the school. And and even the children that are at the school right now, I don't think they're um being pressured like with a lot of reading and writing and math problems. There's like art and, you know, just kind of focusing, trying to focus on um normalcy and their well being. The past two weeks after fall break, um I've been taking them to Hanaka Oo Beach Park. And I think that's the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders there from eight to twelve ish. And I I imagine that lasts as long as the teacher's um sick leave. It's very uncertain. I did um make a call to um some someone in the U H system requesting support statewide from the immersion programs. Because, you know, if this can happen to us in West Maui where we had a well established Kula Kailapuni after a disaster, then um no Kailapuni program is safe. You know, if we're not being supported and our concerns as to safety is not being taken seriously, whether for English or immersion, then that is how people will be treated statewide. And I don't think that's appropriate. You know, just looking back on the history of how um the World Trade Center was handled and the number of responders who were told, oh, you don't need to wear a mask. And then more people died in the aftermath than responding to the initial incident. And so I think it's important to know that although we know a lot, we don't know everything. And so I think it's important to know that although we know a lot, we don't know everything. And, um, ultimately if our children become sick one, five, 10 years in the future, nobody wants a lawsuit settlement. We want our children to be healthy.
Sure. Civil B?
Um, you mentioned not really knowing where the administration might stand on the Pulelehua project, but stepping back like just more generally, how's, how's communication been with the mayor and administration?
Improving a bit.
Uh, define improving. No, it, I, it has been improving. I think the mayor is realizing that, um, there's another branch of government that he needs to confer with going through this disaster and through anything. And I believe he has made an attempt lately to, um, to stay closer in touch with us.
Yeah, um, we had a, a fairly lengthy conversation on Sunday before his announcement of the opening of phase two and phase three. And I'm hoping it wasn't a one-off because I thought it was beneficial on both sides. And then, um, today I had a, a, um, good-sized conversation with Ms. Mahi about, um, plans for economic development. Um, because, you know, um, in one of his, um, press conferences or, or whatever, where he was in Kalihii with, um, that one hour, when he mentioned that, you know, 134 eateries in Lahaina don't exist anymore. And so that was a concern that, you know, the major hotel capacity and from Anapali to Kapalua still exist and, um, the capacity of where those folks will eat if it comes back to that, um, what we've seen in the past, especially November, December. And so they're working on some, um, street markets or food truck locations. And I think the initial location that they were looking at, I had some concerns of it being too far outside of Lahaina and, and they did run into some resistance, um, from the Department of Transportation. I don't think the conversation is over, but I was able to mention some other locations and maybe, you know, it might not be a big, as big as their first option, but you know, breaking it up into various locations could allow like not just one over, location to get overwhelmed and just to spread it out. And then people can try different places, whether it's, you know, pop-up boutiques in 20-foot pods or food trucks or whatever it is the case, you know, like, um, with the holiday season coming up, like handmade crafters or whatever. So, um, being able to, um, communicate with the Office of Economic Development more than previously, I was not super stoked on the, here past this, you know? I've gotten, um, standing every other week, meetings with Josiah Nishita, who is in charge of the Office of Recovery and open invitation if things pop up in between the two weeks out to him. So it's definitely from, you know, no telephone even existing where I was at to being able to, um, have those types of communications. I would love for it to go beyond and be included in the brainstorming phase. But, you know, as long as we're making forward progress, that's the important thing.
Anything else? KI TV?
One really quick one. So the press, uh, release mentioned that you folks plan to hold regular press conferences? Would that be like weekly or monthly?
There's Josiah right now going into one of our offices. Well, I'm going to be talking to the rest of the members and, um, checking their schedules. We'd like to do it maybe every other week during our, this is what we call our, our off week, cause then we have our committee weeks and that's hard because we have meetings morning and afternoon. So there would be little time for a press conference. So, uh, during the off weeks, but I need to check with, um, our other members. We started with Member Paulton because obviously the disaster and the wildfires in Lahaina, um, every, is on many people's minds and a lot of people want to know what's going on, including the people in Lahaina. So again, as soon as we decide on who the next person will be, we'll contact all of you and hopefully you can come. And then, um, we can handle it this way or you can come with questions first. It, it's up to you. Whichever works for you guys. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Tomorrow?
Thank you, Charlie.
Recording has stopped.
County of Maui Disaster Area Residential Zone Announcement for Zones 9H, 9I and 9J. What County of Maui Disaster Area Restrictions Will Be Lifted For Owners And Residents With Vehicle Passes From 7:00 AM To 3:00 PM Beginning Monday, October 30th And Tuesday, October 31st In Zones 9H, 9I And 9J. When 7:00